Jim Sayers.
Grant Murray.
Ann Lepina.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
So this is the last time for Jim Sayers and Grant Murray. You could always come back. You could run again.
I'll think about it.
Yeah, we'll make that decision down there.
So because we need to do the approval of the last meeting that we all had on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, we'll do the approval of those minutes prior to going into getting everybody changed out. So has everybody read the minutes from December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three? Are there any changes, modifications, points of discussion?
Motion to accept.
I'll second that, ma'am.
Any discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. So I'm not really sure. I tried to think of something to say about the appreciation we have for you two, but it's been a lot of work and you've done great jobs and so thank you. I think you can, even if people don't agree with some of our decisions, you can look at the amount of work we've done since we voted to incorporate and the amount of progress we've made. So I really would like to thank both of you and I don't think either of you are really off the hook yet on a couple of things, but thank you. Would anybody else like to chime in?
I agree. It's been really good working with you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the startups.
Yeah.
You know, I think this council's worked really hard for a lot of years, so I'm really proud to be part of this group and to see this new group coming on board. Our town is, from when we started talking about getting this done and sitting here today, as the mayor said, it's an amazing amount of progress. So, you know, Bluff's worth it and that's why we're all here. This town is worth it and I'm glad I've done my little bit to just sit with this group and make decisions.
Yeah, what could be more fun than to be part of the first council of Bluff, Utah? I mean, that's really something that I am very appreciative to everyone for. I mean, this was a, this was a real privilege and so far it's worked out pretty good, too, which was a surprise at first.
It is not.
No, it's, it's been a real honor and a pleasure and actually really a lot of fun as you all know or can imagine to start things up and to see them walk on their own.
Well, you've used the word, you used honor, but it's been an honor to, because everyone that's on the council, especially you two, so I just really appreciate it.
Well, all that dropping by you do, Linda, just don't stop dropping by. You know how we drop by and start, you still gotta drop by and say hello during the week.
Well, I think that if everyone's okay, we'll move into introducing Jen Davila and Britt Hornsby, who, thank you for running and thank you to Gary Lichtenstein and Wesley Shook for running as well. It was, I was really impressed with all the campaigns and the cleanliness of it and the lack of finger pointing and name calling. And I, I think for Utah, we look pretty darn good in elections down here. So Britt, maybe you want to just give a one or two minute introduction of yourself and then we'll move to Jen and then we'll have Marcia Hadenfeld get you sworn in.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to work with you all. My name is Britt Hornsby. For those of you who don't know me, I can't see who's online. I've been living in the county for sixteen years, going on seventeen years. I moved out here in two thousand and seven with my wife Sarah to be in AmeriCorps Vista. And we built a house here about six years ago. We have two kids, Quinn, who is three, almost four, and Virgil, who just turned one in October. Yeah, we live up on the hill, below Cemetery Hill, on Facilia Drive, on the deck, the red-roofed house out there. Yeah, I work for Bear's Years Partnership right now. I am the field director there. I handle all of our field conservation efforts, which are quite a bit these days. My background is almost all in conservation and public land management. I worked for Four Corners School of Outdoor Education in Monticello, lived in Monticello for four years and was a San Juan River Ranger for the Bureau of Land Management for seven seasons before getting my gig, my current gig with Bear's Years Partnership. So that's a little bit about where I come from. I'm excited to get to work on all the exciting things I've heard about. The little bit I've gotten to see behind the curtain already has been very exciting, so I'm just ready to get going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jen?
All right, well, I want to start off by thanking everybody for, you know, forming the government, participating and keeping our town moving in a positive direction. I'm Jennifer Davila. I grew up in Bluff. I'm proud to be like, you know, there's not, there's not too many of us who could say that. Bluff means a lot to me and that's why I run for town council. I wanted to shape the direction that our town moves into. I'm a business owner, I'm a mom, I'm a kid, parents who still live here. Got a lot invested in this town and I want to continue to see it move in a great direction. So I look forward to helping shape these things and I'll keep it short and sweet because I also like short meetings. Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Well, this is the new council seated after.
As soon as we swear the name, because if something happened, I have to go.
I don't want to do it in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Do this. And why don't we do it, why don't we have both of you stand and we can do the repeat after me version?
Can I have you grab that mic on that table? Thanks. Make official.
Okay. So please state your full name. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Britt Hornsby.
Jennifer Davila.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of?
Town Bluff Town Council.
Okay. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the consti-, actually, we could do repeat after me. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah?
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity?
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Well, congratulations and thank you and thank you and goodbye, Jennifer.
Sign with the number and just cross the signature and I'll take your hand.
Yeah, pleasure. Thanks a lot.
And here they're running off.
Hmm?
And you're running off.
I'm going to watch the Tar Hills play, that's my problem. It's not gonna happen, it's just getting ready to start.
Can you wait for public comment?
Oh.
Now I'm really scared.
I will get it all signed up.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, you two.
Thank you.
So we move to public comment. There's a three-minute time limit for each person who seems to make public comments. If you exceed the three-minute time limit, the controller will mute you. Erin, do we have public comments either online or in the audience?
I don't see anything online, but let's go, it looks like we've got some folks in the audience. I've asked them to grab a microphone and then I'll make sure if there's no one else online when they're finished.
All right, Josh Ewing for Five Black Logists. I just wanted to come and give a public comment of thanks particularly to Brent and Jim for your service. It's, in a little town like this, it takes all of us and having been one of the people that was part of that original committee to incorporate, I'm so proud of everybody for the hard work. You guys are still putting it in, so much thanks to all of you for the hard work. But on tonight, when you're stepping off the council, going to watch the Tar Hills, just really wanted to know, you know that there's some folks in town that will be town, town council nights, Jen and Britt, where there's nobody here and maybe just people watching online, but all that hard work does not go unrecognized by us, us the voters here. So I was really proud of the election, too, the campaigns, as you said. I'm really excited to have the new members of the council, Britt and Jen. Welcome to the town council. I know you're going to do a lot of good, hard work and it won't always be appreciated, but hopefully when you step off the council, I'll be here to be able to say thanks to you as well. So I think I will speak for the town as one resident, just thanks to all the hard work that everybody put, particularly for you two stepping off. It's been a real journey and we can just know that you're appreciated.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much.
Glad it really.
Yep.
And typically, we do not take messages in the chat box. However, I think this is perfect. Sarah Birak writes, Quinn says to Britt, "I love you," and Virgil blows a kiss. So just, I want to hide it.
Perfect.
All right. That looks like that's the conclusion.
Um, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Have a good evening and you're not off the hook.
That's right. Call us if you need us.
Are you gonna say that to me?
What?
Are you going to say, "Call us if you need us"?
No. Because I know I don't have to say it. I know you'll do it anyway. Doesn't matter if I say it or not. Thanks a lot, people.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erin. Very much. This has been great. Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yeah, you're not going far. We'll still find you.
Good luck, dude.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Thunderdome.
I'll see you later. Thanks a lot.
You're much too giddy.
Yeah. I'll see you later. Thank you.
You will. Bye, Marcia.
Thank you.
Now I feel like we should all just go home. All right, number one, discussion and vote on a mayor pro tem, discussion and vote on clerk recorder, and discussion and vote on treasurer. I'll start with the clerk recorder. Linda, are you in any way wanting to change your position or do you want to stay on as clerk recorder?
I'm fine with staying on.
All right, so then looking at the three of you, we need a mayor pro tem. How we've done it in the past is not necessarily to nominate, but to just allow people to say what they're interested in and what they're willing to do and not go through the motions of nominating and voting. Voting, yes, but not denominating if we've got people who want to step up. So mayor pro tem, that backs me up. I try really hard to make every meeting so that the mayor pro tem doesn't have to change a schedule for themselves. I always make sure, unless there would be an emergency, I've always made sure the agenda is ready for the mayor pro tem. The biggest help that I will call upon someone is if I'm doing double duty with government officials or meetings where I really can't be in two places and I feel that it's really important that I have somebody else go and represent the government because that is part of the job I'm supposed to do. So with that in mind, anyone interested in doing that?
That was the one I'm most interested in, I think, for sure. Because I feel like I've got plenty of experience at this point dealing with government officials, big wigs, small wigs, the media, that stuff, got experience with that. So of the remaining posts, that's the one I'm most interested in.
I'm fine with that because I'm worried that with my scheduling, sometimes that if there was some kind of an emergency or you needed, you know, last minute covering or something like that, that would be difficult for me to just say, oh, so-and-so, can you work?
Yeah, I'm happy to have you step up to do that. You know, that is, if you were ready to do it, that's.
I think so.
So I'll just make the motion that Britt Hornsby would be mayor pro tem for the first year. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Well, Britt, I'm going on a five-week cruise and you're on. I leave tomorrow. All right, then the next one is the vote on the treasurer. There may be some changes in the next year with how we do business, given the amount of the, of grants that we've been able, Erin has been successful at security. But for the purposes of moving forward, we need to have a treasurer. And I'll let Linda explain a little bit of what the duties are because that person will be working closely with Linda and it's not as structured. So Linda, do you want to explain that?
So I'm the clerk. I write checks. I cannot sign checks or make deposits. So the treasurer does those things. Plus, we have, when we sign checks, two people sign checks. So the treasurer signs those things. The treasurer, I work with the treasurer to reconcile the accounting package and the statements from the bank, which basically are just making sure they match. And I supply reports to everybody. So you'll be all getting a monthly report for December. I'm waiting for one more statement to come in. And so typically, the treasurer might look at the budget and see a couple times a year how we are doing in terms of budget. Now, we're going to have to amend the budget, so, because of the grants, but it's, so it's important to have a treasurer, but you don't have a lot of responsibilities. Brent was the treasurer. I was getting him to sign things all the time.
And Linda's been pretty flexible with finding the two people who can sign off on the checks and some, which is part of what we'll have to set up for you two at Zion's is for you to be signatories and Erin and I have been working on that today. And we'll just give you a heads up that we need to have you pop over to Zion at some point because you have to do it in person. But Linda's a little more, has more flexibility and she knows every month these things have to get done. So there are two of you left standing.
I don't mind doing it unless you want to do it, Lou.
No, I was thinking about you, actually. No, I was because it's, I always have a lot of comments about the bookkeeping and the investing and that kind of thing, so I wouldn't mind. But if you're willing to, I think you have a lot of experience from your Bluff Water Works, you know, the business also, so you kind of know how that should be flowing and.
I do definitely know how to reconcile a bank statement.
Yeah, well, and just the investment, how that all works.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind doing that, you know, and helping, running, running the planning, I feel like I do that regularly.
Yeah, so you're up there a lot.
Depositing checks and things like that. I know that can be tricky sometimes.
And for signing them, for signing them, if, you know, if they're left here, like after we approve the list and then they're left here or like she's got them tonight after we finish, I'll sign, but, you know, we can make that.
So I'll make the motion that Jen Davila will be the treasurer for the next year.
My second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Excuse me. Then the second item is every year we have to determine when we're meeting, meaning the days, the times. And what I did, because I always mess this up, I went ahead and I have a copy for everyone, but I just went through the calendar for two thousand and twenty-four, identifying the first three Tuesdays at every month at four thirty P M, only for the purposes of discussion because Erin gave me a little bit of feedback about days and times. And I know that there's some questioning on the number of times, but this is for the purpose of discussion. If we were to go with a Tuesday, these are the Tuesdays in the twelve months. So I'll give everybody a copy. And it was good that I did this ahead of time because I, of course, messed up a lot of it and, like I said, for the purpose of discussion, we have to run in this anyway. So I'd like to be able to nail it down tonight so we can get it into the paper this week for next week.
So I thought we had some conflicts with Tuesdays.
Tuesdays looked like the best. It was Tuesday, like evenings, we were running into some conflicts. It seemed like Mondays were out and then no one wanted Fridays. And then planning and zoning, I thought they moved their meeting, but they're still on Wednesdays and so.
It was B W W once a month.
So we said.
But they're at night.
What's that?
They're at night also.
So Tuesdays seem to be the best, but that's not to say.
Does that work for you?
Get shifted forward like that, yeah, it's perfect.
If we're done by six or quarter after or something. How about you, Jen?
Yeah, if, if any of them work for me because I will schedule somebody to.
Or we could start at four and be done at five thirty. I mean, I just threw this together so that we could get some consensus here.
I like four thirty.
Britt, does that give you enough time as your class?
Yeah, I mean, it was.
Four thirty to, it's usually an hour and a half.
If it's an hour and a half, four would be better, if at all possible.
Let's do four then.
Is that okay? Because if I could be leaving here at five thirty, you know, it puts me up there to teach.
Well, and usually we're virtual tonight, it's a special night, you all coming, you know, so.
Yeah, totally. No, that, that would be fine.
I think that we're still doing virtual and in-person. We haven't changed that.
Our attorney would really like us to go back to doing as much in person as we're comfortable with and I think for the, for two thousand and twenty-four, I'm fine with coming in and having something, having myself be here, but it's up to everybody whether you want to do it virtually or not. There's no requirement.
One note before we publish, let's chat really fast about the meeting link. I believe the original meeting link was set up on Jim's computer, I think under his login, so maybe we do that under the manager or the office. So that meeting login might change. Of course, we would announce that and post it and everyone would know. I know you've all been using that for quite some time, but just for accessibility and canceling and changing things, that would probably be a good thing to update, if you're okay with that.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with it. And I think the other thing is everybody should double check the citations to meet Google and the phone number and the YouTube because I'm really good at transposing numbers. So I think then the real question that people have, I, I'll start. I still feel that we need three meetings a month. It's easier to cancel than to have to add in terms of the amount of work that we have to do. The reason I think that we still need three meetings is we are in litigation. We have the C C C and a number of grants rolling in in January, February, and March. We're going to have a lot of bookkeeping, receipting, those kinds of things. I just don't think we can do it in two meetings a month. Now, I would, my suggestion would be that when we get to the second meeting, we look ahead and say, maybe we can cancel the next, you know, the third one. But you have to factor in that we probably will need some, some work sessions, particularly in the next three months. Excuse me. So I'll open it up for other people, will you?
I can start, I guess. I think that everything you listed sounds administrative and that if we do the middle one as a work session, we can work through anything that, that we're discussing and trying to figure out and what's going to happen next or tours of the old school or whatever it might be. And then have the two meetings to do the voting and the actual business of the town. And have the other one in the morning where we can hash everything out and work through things and work on whatever needs work on. And that still leaves us two per month to, you know, approve checks, approve whatever we need. Or, and then that, that middle one could be when we meet with the attorney or whatever we need to do.
And I disagree with you that a lot of it is administrative, a lot of it is going to be hands-on, just not administrative, but.
Decisions for the council?
I mean, Erin can make a lot of decisions, but she can't make decisions on strategy and litigation. A lot of this, I'm just gonna, sorry I have to keep a cough flap in my mouth.
It's, for me, I mean, I do, you know, all the minutes, all format agendas, all the other things. Three is much easier. It is so exhausting doing two long meetings. Having meetings that are hour and a half or less are so much easier and if someone's missing, much easier to catch up. We frequently need a work session during the month and sometimes we need two, but usually one is enough. And my feeling is we need the flexibility to do a work session when we need it, instead of saying, oh, this day is a work session, trying to populate it. Because things come up during the month that you're not expecting and a work session, like you were saying, it's time for us to really think, really be able to talk about different ideas for issues. So I am in favor of three regular meetings plus we could easily need to vote for the, during the meeting and we can't if it's a work session. We might have to call special meetings just to vote, which is going to be a little bit harder because, you know, both of you work. So I think it's, I think what we've been doing has been working really well.
I, I feel like I don't know enough yet to have an opinion of this other than anything that we can schedule in advance is easier for me. Of course, it's, you know, since we have the technology option of popping on when we need to, that, that really makes things a lot more flexible, I think. Because if it's a pension, you know, an emergency vote or something like that, then all we have to do is be present and on a screen or something. I can sit at my office if I can't get that covered and do something like that. But I, I feel like, I don't know, even though I've watched meetings for lots of years, you know, I don't have a timeframe or a time opinion about, about what, how many meetings it needs to take.
Yeah, ditto, because I don't know the background work it takes, you know, to have those meetings, you know, to, so I'm just going to go with what y'all think. So, I mean, three is fine with me. That's what I'm geared up for.
And Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, because I went past, you know, while I was in Seattle, but don't we have a date with Pathways set up to do a strategic plan meeting? Like I'm thinking the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of January.
Probably do, it looks like January twenty-first. January twenty-third, it looks like, tentative.
And so I know one month is enough time to have Britt and Jen get a feel for why they might want to go with two or three, but Lou, as a compromise, would you agree that we run the? But Lou, as a compromise, would you agree that we run the ad over three meetings a month? And we revisit the strategic planning? And we just continue to look at it as if we can switch something to a work session in the middle? Part of, and I hadn't even thought about this until Linda said it, when we go two and a half to three weeks between meetings, it's a disaster for me and a disaster for Linda to try to put everything together that we've been doing and track everybody. And while Erin has certainly taken on a lot of administrative duties, these three grants, well, actually, there are five of them. The two big ones are going to be, and so let's give it, Erin, and all of us, maybe January, and then talk about it.
Well, and I'd keep the first and the third, so you don't have these big gaps, you know, between meetings. I don't think it's a good idea. I think that having the one off and an occasional second one is nice. But I don't think, I wouldn't do the first two and then wait till the next month to do the first two. I just thought a work session would be more productive.
So could we give it a try, just run this and then play it by ear, January and see?
You said we cancel them, like it may be, like that's something I can, okay.
It'd be the middle one, then that would be traded out for a work session or something.
It's easy to cancel. I'm having a little problem with, and I realize this is because we had, you know, Jim and Brandt here. The distance between all of us, I'm having trouble hearing people. So when you're talking, you're good.
Maybe using the microphones would be helpful?
Yeah. Because you're next, right here.
It's the open room.
So maybe Lou and I need to pick up the microphone. And my voice is raspy, so that's not helping anything. So can I get a vote on using this general format with, starting at four o'clock PM, double checking all the login information and then revisiting it during the strategic planning and keeping this on our radar for when we can cancel or when we can change it to a work session? Can we get a vote on what I just rambled through?
So I make a motion for what you just said, which included meetings starting at four, going to five thirty, and the first three Tuesdays and revisiting.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Well, regarding revisiting, I think it's set unless we decide.
Make things, getting your own papers so that we don't have to hand. We can always keep so much easier. In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moving to number four.
So three.
Am I, three, oh, gosh. I'm really in a hurry to get through this. The Declaration of Conflict of Interest forms. I think that I have them here. And Marcia made a really good suggestion. Rather than expecting us all to look at these, fill them out, and have her sit around while we discuss it. Everybody will take, it's a two-page form, fill it out. And when you're ready to get it notarized, give a shout out to Marcia Haddonfeld. She will notarize it and then she'll send us a bill at the end. You're free to go to any other notary, but that way we can get it billed out.
And while you're passing out papers, planning and zoning will need to fill out these same forms, correct? Planning and zoning will need to get these filled out as well.
And Marcia said that she would remind planning and zoning that they need to get that done as well. I didn't tell her to make sure that she does the same thing for billing. So Erin, you and I should, okay, thank you. They really should be in within the next week or so. And if you have a question about it, I think the best thing is review the ethics portion of the handbook or shoot an email up to the Utah League of Cities and Towns to their attorney, Todd Godfrey, and he should be able to answer it. We can't use Chris to answer our individual questions. As a group, we can, but not an individual one.
After they're signed, I think I did collect them last year, but, yeah.
But I keep, but I'm the one who gets them ultimately.
Oh, in that case, just send them to Linda.
Yeah, just send them, send them out to Linda then. So number four, which is the Discussion of Open and Public Meetings Act and their requirements along with other trainings that are offered by the league and Utah Local Government Trust. I think all of us have taken the Open and Public Meetings Act training for this year. I don't know if Lou has taken it yet, but the other four of us did. And then I think we need to provide some documentation to Erin or Linda. But it should get done within the first thirty to sixty days.
Yeah, so since all of you are reporting, send it to me. I'm keeping track of it on my admin drive. And then I put it out on the pub, on our website, so the public knows that you all have completed your trainings as well.
What do we need to provide for documentation?
So if you get a certificate, so many of them like have a certificate that pops up or gets emailed to you, send that to me, because I keep all of those in my files. If for some reason it doesn't provide a certificate, let me know on a one-off basis. But most of them should provide a certificate of completion.
Yeah, since the four of us took the one to the, that four-hour training a couple of weeks ago, I can just follow up with Meg and ask her if they've got a certificate that they can send up.
I don't think I've seen anything come through on email.
No, usually it comes in the mail and I didn't, I didn't see anything either. So I'll just make a note to follow up with the league and for all of us.
I did also, because I couldn't find the current years online, like they said that they were going to post. So I did email her just to check and she said they hadn't got it published yet, but they would soon. In case anybody wanted to, in case anybody was like, yeah, information overload on that. Particularly.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It was a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot of information. And the other thing, on the Local Government Trust, I just got an email from Mike Stagg, who has outlined the current programs that are available. And I'll just go ahead and make a suggested list up of ones that look interesting. And I'll provide you with the links so you can look. But I think they were really good trainings and they were short and you just did them on your own. Just a reminder, if we decide we're all going to do the training, if you tell me you did it, I'm the manager and I can see if you didn't do it. Sometimes, you know, at least just turn the computer on and make it look like you logged in. Telling me you took it when you didn't turn the computer on doesn't work. Number, any questions on the training? There's a lot of resources through the league and the government trust, so we should use them. Number five, the AmeriCorps team arrives on January eighth. Usually by now we have the biography, so I'll follow up with that. With it falling so close to the holidays, it might be that they just haven't gotten them together. Linda, I didn't think to ask this, but have you written a check yet to the St. Christopher's Mission for part of the lodging?
No, they need to get me invoice and I will...
Good luck. If you would write the check, I'll follow up on the invoice. So it's six thousand and we should pay three thousand toward that.
Three thousand?
It's six thousand total, but I just need the three thousand to get the invoice. And then, this is just a comment to the public. When AmeriCorps arrives on the eighth, they will not have sufficient room in the van for food. So if anybody feels generous and they want to drop something off at the mission the day before, that would be great. So they'll have some food when they get out there. We'll take them up to Blanding on the ninth. And then on the ninth is the orientation day. So I'll send out a reminder, but if you can pop out to the mission in the morning on the ninth to introduce yourself. And if that's not convenient, that's fine though. You'll get to meet them. But what we've done in the past is just oriented them a little bit to what the council and planning and zoning does. Excuse me, identified some lunch and learn topics. And mostly hear about what they're interested in and find out if somebody's like a good muralist and they want to put a mural on the storage container in the yard that has drawn some negative comment. So maybe somebody will want to make a mural. And then the work will start on the tenth. Jim Sayers is going to supervise the work in the CCC, the Cooperative Cultural Center. But there's a caveat in that he can only do it through the twenty-second. So if we go longer in the CCC, then January twenty-second, we'll need to have a backup plan. And since they'll start with the ceiling and then move to the wallboards and the carpeting, I don't think that's going to get us past the twenty-second. So I'll also be thinking of other projects that we can have with the, with AmeriCorps. Right now, I think there are nine of them coming. And I'll make sure Britt and Jen to get the scope of work. I don't think that went to the two of you because it was probably a couple of months ago and I'll get that to you so you can look at it. I talked to Britt already. One of the, one of the scope of works might be to put a gate in the back fence if UDB is willing.
Yeah, I remember you talking.
Yeah, and then Jen helping with the garden, the community garden. But we've got them until the twenty-first, I think, of February. So we've got a lot of time and we need to be able to fill forty hours a week for that many people.
The, I talked to someone from the food pantry, because it's going to, it's happening Friday. And so I will get things from the food pantry for them.
Then number six, discussion and approval of a memorandum of understanding to engage Hanson Consulting for the mandated revisions to the town subdivision ordinance.
And we skipped number four, sorry.
Am I doing this? No, I got four.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. It's good to catch me because...
I was thinking of something else.
The, as you might recall, the legislature mandated revisions to the subdivision ordinance. And this is one of the few paid-for mandates. And so we were sent the list, there were like four or five different companies that the state was willing to pay and contracted with. And so we left it, going back, so that people don't think I jumped the gun. We left it with planning and zoning, they chose Hanson. But they can't sign a contract, so they can't sign the MOU. So I already signed it because we'd approved whatever they were going to do. So I would just like to advise everybody that the contract with Hanson has been signed and planning and zoning then can begin to work with them. When the subdivision ordinance is done, it still comes back to us for approval. So this is just approving the free services. Any questions on that? Then number seven. I don't know if you've walked in the back, but the update on the status of the Bluff Community Center remodel. We're still in the process of remodeling. Sam Weldon said we should be able to move in by Thursday at the end of the day. And then over the weekend, the bathrooms should go in. So it's close, but it's not quite there. However, we had to use our American Rescue Plan money by the end of twenty twenty-three, which we did. So our first payment plus to Weldon Building covered the ARPA funds. And so now Erin and I just need to work on the reporting of the conclusion of that grant. And then we can close the ARPA grant off. Any questions on that? Then number eight is something for Erin to talk about. The report on the status of the government-to-government grant and specifically updating us on the asbestos information for removal, mitigation, or encapsulation.
So we're currently working with EPA to get the contract put together for the grant. So we've been selected, but we have yet to actually like sign a contract and receive the award. So one of the most important parts of this process is ensuring that we really understand what is in the budget, especially regarding asbestos. So what I had originally written into the grant had some information about requesting money for the actual testing itself and then a small amount, probably, I think it was right around like sixty, seventy thousand dollars for asbestos treatment, whether that be mitigation, removal. So last week, we had a meeting with, was it Lauren from the state? I don't remember. I think her name's Lauren. In any case, an asbestos specialist from the state of Utah. Because while the federal government EPA is overseeing our grant, they actually refer to the state in terms of how each state handles asbestos. So based on the results that came back from our testing, we are actually in pretty good shape. So we have non-friable asbestos, and we won't get into all the details. Fryable, very bad. Non-friable, bad, but not as severe. The state is okay if we choose to encapsulate it or remove it. If we choose to encapsulate it, we could work with a certified flooring specialist. That would probably be a little bit less expensive. That company would need to know that, you know, we're not going at the floor with like jackhammers or anything. We're really trying not to disturb it, but truly just encapsulate it. If we wanted to do a full removal, I would definitely encourage and I would encourage this council to talk about whether that's an option that we want to go down. And then we would work with the design review committee, both UDB, town council, to really talk about that option, because that is going to increase our costs, I would have to imagine, when we talk about full removal. I, sounds like UDB from our meeting this afternoon. UDB has a board meeting on Friday in which they are talking in depth about the CCC building. But I think it's important that this council determine, you know, kind of your direction on how you'd like these grants to be processed. And a big part of this is the budget for this particular one. And so if you were to choose to, you know, provide the DRC with the guidance of, let's get it removed, I want to have that kind of figured out pretty soon, so we know how much that would chip into the budget and maybe change some of the other bigger, lessen some of the other bigger projects that were originally included in that EPA grant. And then for Jen and Britt, did I get you copies of the EPA application yet?
I have it from, yeah, but I could get it again.
Okay, so I'll make sure you have that. But I would say probably, Ann, if we can have this on one of the upcoming meeting agendas, just to get some concrete thoughts on estimates. The biggest issue that I'm going to run into, if we receive an estimate from a company, I don't want to say it immediately disqualifies them, but you guys remember in our work session, it really makes it hard with these federal funds. So I can, I can get you like really some ballparks. But overall, we're going to kind of need to kind of pick a direction. And then, you know, if we need to adjust, we always can. But at least pick the direction to get the budget in an okay shape to move forward, to sign that contract. But at least pick the direction to get the budget in an okay shape to move forward, to sign that contract.
Is there more discussion with UDB about space division and things like that? Or I feel like when we all did walk through together, that that was still really kind of muddy and up in the air.
The one thing I will note for the EPA specifically, and then, sorry, Ann, I don't mean to cut you off. EPA specifically and asbestos specifically. Asbestos is all common area because it's the hallways. So that's going to make a big difference for you all. And then EPA specifically, big systems, insulation, HVAC, big stuff that all of us are going to be impacted by. And then from there, sorry.
So I might as well talk about the elephant in the room because it's something we all need to be thinking about. Utah, Denebakea has changed executive directors. And I've been meeting with Janet Chi. I'm meeting with her on Thursday before their board meeting on Friday. According to Ms. Chi, the board is very unhappy with the agreement that was reached with the town and very unhappy about the provisions of the ownership. There appears to be some additional issues that UDB is going to have to address. And those issues are surrounding funding and the future of the mission for UDB. I think that I'm, I'm very positive. I, Ms. Chi is very sharp. She's very intuitive. We're trying to work through an understanding for the UDB board as to how the UDB board paid three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And the title is in the town's name. And so it's a difficult situation. It obviously is not where any of us would like to be, including UDB, to be backpedaling two and a half to three years ago. Right now, UDB has released at least one of their consultants. Dave Konine retired. There may be two staff members who are either released or have decided to leave UDB. And hopefully on Friday, Ms. Chi will be able to give us a little more direction. In the meantime, her board has told her that no funds are to be spent on the CCC. And the only work that we can do is any work that we have reached an agreement on from the walkthrough, which is basically the ceilings, the carpeting, wallboards. The whiteboards, those kinds of things. I'm really hopeful that when Ms. Chi gets a full picture of how we've worked the last two and a half years, that she'll be able to go to her board and get a little more support for this project. That being said, I will admit that I am extremely edgy about the fact that these two grants, the million-dollar grant and the four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant hinge on this partnership. And so, you know, we're, any insight that folks have, any thoughts that you have, please feel free to let me know. And if you know anyone on the UDB board that personally that you can talk with, I think this is a good time. It's going to be a rough January, I think, with UDB. But I'm really hopeful that with Ms. Chi at the helm, that some of the, what's been obvious about the lack of communication between board members and the executive director and then to the DRC, the design review team, that this will help. I mean, I just have to be really hopeful that this is going to clear the air. So with that being said, and the, I'll just jump ahead to the DRC so that we don't have to go back to it and catch up. We met today. Ms. Chi was on the, on the line, Damian Ballerman, who has been told to suspend his billing to UDB. He was on the line. Jim Sayers, myself. Who am I missing? Erin. And if, you know, we just kind of talked through a few things that are routine that we do every time, talking about where the status of the grants are and everything. But the main, I think, and I'll let Erin jump in here. I think the main takeaway is that Ms. Chi is very interested in trying to figure out where we are and how we got here. And she called a special board meeting, which is, to me, a positive because UDB board meetings have been quarterly and that has now been real helpful to the design review team. So Erin, do you want to jump in and fill stuff in?
Yeah, the only other big thing from today's meeting was a reminder to everyone on DRC that for the EPA grant, there are specific action items that both parties need to be conducting in order to, to obtain that grant. And so their board, or I should say, Ms. Chi has, has that. And Damian had, had that information. The big one that would need to be worked on jointly would be, I don't know if it's an additional agreement or an addendum to the agreement which specifies the partnership in relation to the EPA grant itself. Because we clearly have a working agreement as to how, how the boards are supposed to work together. But the EPA wants something very explicit essentially for how, how the funding is used. And so, so that's a big one, that, you know, when we hear back what the board has to say on Friday, that we would want to push that forward and be able to work together to, to agree on that agreement. But besides that, I think, as Ann said, it was pretty, pretty routine. We certainly need additional, someone additional for, for DRC. We've been meeting the first three Tuesdays just to kind of match ours at two PM. I think, you know, given that there's kind of a change in guard, that meeting time and date can be flexible. But certainly, we want to really keep on, keep, keep, keep on this over the next couple of days.
So the way that the acquisition and redevelopment agreement is written is that each entity will have two members on the committee. And I, given where we are right now, I would like to stay and share that committee for, if for no other reason than continuity. And certainly, it's something that we can go back and revisit. But I think for the next month, until we get a heads up from UDB as to what their plan is, it just isn't a good, the best time to switch. We do need at least one other person because three of us can't be on that meeting without noticing for Utah Public Notice website. But Erin has been joining us, which has been really useful. So does someone, at least for next week, we need to keep it at two o'clock on Tuesday. And I'm not sure who from UDB will be on that meeting. I might know more on Friday. But who, does somebody want to volunteer to, to start sitting in? And it can be exchangeable. I mean, you don't have to do it for the next five years. Are you okay with that, Lou? Yeah, I think for right now, just to move forward through January and try to get a sense as to where we are. Because as we can all hear, if, if we don't have a partnership, we don't have those grants. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. So it's really imperative to have some continuity and turn this around a little bit and the thinking a little bit.
Well, I also would like you to stay on it because like you said, I think it is important to do continuity. And like, you know, I, I don't, why I paid attention to what the original agreement was and things like that. I don't know the nitty-gritty about it. And with UDB having a total, entire new board, I think it's really important that we have some original people who, this is why we did it the way we did it in, in place.
And I'm just wondering what you want. Do you think it's better that I do it for temporarily until we get a town committee to, for the continuity? Or are we fine with Jen?
So here's my fear. We're going to get that grant that you're sitting and waiting on, and then we're going to be going down another direction. And if it's okay, let's let Jen do it. Because we're going to be hearing pretty soon, I think, from Utah and.
Would it be all right if maybe one of these first meetings or something that we tag out just so I can meet the people and say, you know, I'm saying, would that be okay?
Yep. Yeah, we can figure that out.
Or we'll.
Three of us there and.
Or if we could just tag out on one of the meetings or something like that, just so I can come in and say hello and meet Jen. You know, unless that's going to like technically happen some other way.
No, that's easy. We, we've been pretty fluid and for, there was a period of time where Britt and I were tag teaming because it wasn't, it wasn't productive. The meetings were, had become unproductive. And so we were going back and forth.
Go at the two o'clock before the meeting starts and just say hello and whatnot and meet everybody and then go out.
Yeah, it might, it might be not, just to get a, I've heard so much about how it, like the working relationship with them. I would just, I kind of would like to see, you know, if at all possible. Like, and then not to like permanently tag in just to be like, oh, hey, oh, this is how these meetings go. This is what y'all are talking about, that kind of thing, so.
We need to have a, a meeting with all of us is, is one of the goals that we all.
Yeah, so if you're cool with that, Jen, just whenever it works for you, I'll just tag in whenever it's convenient. And I get not doing it right now here in all the headache, but.
Yeah, well, we can figure that out in the next couple of days. But I agree with Lou. There have been many attempts at getting both boards together in the same room and it has not been successful. So maybe with the change of leadership, we'll see that and we can actually meet the board of the partners that we have and they can meet us. So, great. Let's see. Then that covered pretty much nine. Then number ten, I was not able to go to the Bluff Water Works meeting on Wednesday. So Linda went and I'm assuming Jen was there.
So I went to the meeting, the first part of it was their budget meeting, their yearly budget meeting. And they explained, their budgets are similar every time, but they also explained certain pieces, which was helpful. After that, it was their general meeting and the systems are working good. Something new that they are going to, they talked about, well, they have started to notice on Utah Public Notice website. And along with that, they've been taking some trainings to understand how the government kind of things work. For instance, you can't have, a treasurer and a clerk can't be the same person. So they're really gaining information and training. They, Gary Lichtenstein, who wasn't there, is going to be at the next meeting and with a proposal for them for strategic planning. Because they're interested in affordability, sustainability, what happens if something catastrophic happens. So he is presenting a budget for that. The next meeting is on the tenth of January.
January.
And so it's really, so Ann and I have been going to them for like three years. And so it's really interesting to, to go to their meetings and, and see what's happening with what they do in town.
So procedurally.
Yeah.
One of you will need to, well, if it's noticed on the public notice website, how does that work? If a different quorum ends up attending one of their meetings?
That poses an open public meetings violation if Linda and I both go. So that's probably, luckily, we don't. I know we have a meeting coming up next week with BWW.
Next Wednesday. I am, for the foreseeable future, I would like to maintain my, my job with Bluff Water Works. I'm not a voting member. I don't make any decision type things. I'm strictly there to record. But I think it's, I think it's important, especially with the way things are merging and things like that, to, to stay informed on, on what's happening with that. So I would, I would like to continue in my role as secretary at Bluff Water Works.
I would, I think, I'm really interested in what Gary is proposing. And possibly if more than two of us want to be there, then we notice that we're going to be there because this, you know, it's basically they're moving into different, moving forward in different ways.
So what I can do is post for next week's meeting that the Bluff Town Council might be in attendance but not participating in voting on anything. I do think that it's something we need to talk about long-term. Because, not that there are that many things that we have with BWW, but depending on the direction, it could be that Jen's going to have a conflict of interest in voting. So for right now, next week, I will notice it for any of us to go because I think it's really important. And then I guess Linda and I can give up our Wednesday night once, once a month date. And one of us go and then the other one go, or whoever wants to go. But I, I agree. I think right now, it's good for Jen to be there, but I'll notice it. And everybody help me remember, I'm going to post a notice on that.
I, I think it's really nice, this, this is me changing hats. I think it's really nice having the two of you at the Bluff Water Works meetings because I really think it gives you a better insight into what actually happens at those meetings, which is a lot, but. I'm working on trying to figure out how to transfer recordings onto the public website. If anybody has any clues on how to do that.
We, I think Erin, Linda, and I all know how to do it, so we can help you with that.
I have been posting minutes and stuff like that, the written ones. But, but yeah, I'm having a little bit of problem getting them to transfer from my iPhone to, to the public meetings site right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I keep. Does she, okay. Yeah, I'm having problems with, with the files transferring.
Yeah, we could, we could help you with that. It's one of the few technical things I actually know how to do most of the time, so we can help. All right, then Erin. Number eleven, discussion and vote on securing the governor's Office of Economic Development grant.
Great. So we were notified by the state of Utah that we were selected for the rural communities grant. So this was an application that was put together in November, pretty quickly. But they actually did select us to receive the full amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards the renovation of the CCC building. To give you a quick breakdown, the project outcomes, so kind of why, why we said that we were submitted for the grant. So in addition to some of the common spaces like the bathrooms, which definitely need renovation after we saw through our walkthrough, project outcomes will include a business incubator and satellite office space, workforce childcare center, and art gallery. And again, of course, in all grants, just the utilization of the building and, you know, continued partnership with UDB and the town of Bluff. The budget, I definitely would love, you know, any additional input. We, we know that when we get grants, we do want to stick to these pretty closely to prevent any major contract changes. But of course, this was put together a little, little quickly. I will say, in most of our work with state grants, there is more, a little bit more lenience than the federal grants. So doesn't have to be to a T, but. But in terms of big, high level stuff, what we're looking at, architectural, there's quite a lot for a potential architect. We knew that that was something that was kinda missing. We need someone to kinda pull us together, pull our ideas together. Architects can be pretty expensive. So I do have $88,000 for that. I know there had been some discussion about whether someone would wanna do that pro bono or not. So that's a big chunk. But I also think that we would have, if for some reason we didn't end up meeting all of it, we could still work that into some of the renovation on the general shared spaces that would still support this idea of economic prosperity for the CCC building. For overall construction costs, and this is really the meat and the potatoes of it, Bathrooms, renovating the childcare center, minor improvements to like the auditorium and group gathering spaces and things like that. So just big construction, there we go. $16,000 for signage, again, economic, this is an economic center, so it's important. That was the guidance that we received from Collette Cox. Many thanks to Collette for taking a look at our application before it went in. So there are a couple of things in here that, you know, would be maybe outside of the scope of renovation but are still really important to, you know, making sure that folks know why the building is being used and adding value. So you see the signage. We talk about actually like the furnishings and fixtures, and I get really excited about this point. I know we're jumping to the end, but there is money in here for tables and chairs and childcare stuff. So that is exciting. But we do have just two years to use this grant. So it is really important that we figure out how we combine this with EPA with potentially some additional funding to be able to utilize it. Should not even throw out that, like, you know, you can ask for an extension, but it's certainly not guaranteed. So two years to go through this. There's a little bit about like the marketing of the building. General administrative costs are included at 5% of the total grant budget. And then I have a few dollars in for contingency, because there's always contingency with construction. Most important, and I really wanna bring it to your attention before you were to vote on any of this, this grant did require matching funds. So I got a little bit creative. I said that we'd be able to provide an 18% match. So that would be totaling $80,000, however. $30,000 of that would be in kind. Some of it comes from the town manager and project coordinator salary, if we end up bringing someone else on. But clearly, there's a lot of administrative stuff that's going on. So some of that comes from my salary. Some of this in kind comes from the AmeriCorps program. Fantastic, they're here in January, working on the building. That's already locked in. That's great. And then some of the match would also come from the EPA grant itself. However, there, we, I did write in and I suggested that we have some form of actual cash match. So for the application, that was $20,000. We do, for our two incoming folks, don't know how closely you look at our budgets yet, but we do have a fairly healthy capital improvements, capital projects account. I don't have that exact number, but we're looking at $600,000 to $700,000. So 20,000 of that, I think, would be very well spent to prove that we've got a little bit of cash match for this $445,000 grant. So I did wanna put that on the table. Not all grants have matches, but for $20,000 of cash match, hopefully, we get a lot of bang for our buck. Certainly, I'm sure there are additional contracts coming our way. We were just notified and they told us that they'd be reaching out over the next couple of weeks to get everything rolling. But I did wanna ensure that the council was on board with accepting it and ensuring that you all knew that part of this would be a cash match from our capital projects.
Was the cash match a requirement, or was that your...
So I believe, let me follow back up with that. I believe it needed to be some form of cash match. I don't know the exact percentage, but let me look at that and I'll get that back to you.
Just wondering, just not pressing. Awesome, congratulations. And that's how they all come in. It doesn't matter how much planning.
So do people feel comfortable voting on accepting that tonight? Or do you need to have time to think it over for next week? Well, I'll just start. I feel comfortable voting on it. I don't think next week is gonna change my mind. It's money that, excuse me, can work to the benefit of the partnership in getting this building up and running. And I think the 20,000 is great. We probably will come very close with AmeriCorps. If we have eight or nine people working for seven weeks, 40 hours a week each, we're probably gonna get pretty close to that in kind, right there. Lou, do you feel okay voting tonight? Somebody wanna make a motion then?
I make the motion that we accept this grant.
A second.
Any further questions or discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Then it's unanimous. The next is a request and a vote by Canyon Smokehouse, request for a letter of support for their application of San Juan County Rural County Grant. And I'll let Erin and Jacob Nelson take this on.
I've got it online here. This is Jacob Nelson. Thank you, council, for your time. I will keep this quick and to the point as it's already 7:20 and I'd like my wife home at some point. Canyon Smokehouse is looking for a grant that our wonderful grant writer Erin has written for our business. It is the economic, I believe it's called the Economic Expansion Grant, distributed by San Juan County. This grant is used to exactly that, economic expansion of essentially bringing tax dollars for San Juan County. That also helps the town bring in extra tax dollars. We're looking for an amount of about $50,000 to do a patio addition to the smokehouse, as well as new tables, some fixtures, and some overall projects that allow us to do additional occupancy here during our busy months of the summer, which will provide additional economic boon to the town as well as San Juan County. As part of that grant, we're looking for letters of support, in particular, in this case, from the town council. Pretty much says that Canyon Smokehouse has been a good thing in the last year for the community. We're here, we're bringing in tax money. We'd like to continue to be a pillar of this community and the fact that we're open on regular hours and providing good food. And to that end, we are requesting a letter from the town in support. And that's it, unless Erin wants to follow up with anything else.
Any questions for either of the Nelsdens? Any motions? If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. So I'll get together with Erin and we'll put something together and I'll circulate it to everyone.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, the council.
We'll send her home someday, Jacob. Number 13, recreation funds for 2024.
So, and I did not catch this. These are actually in arrears, so this is actually for fiscal year 2023, which concluded about six months ago. We received, I received a letter from Mac McDonald, from the county, stating that they owe the Town of Bluff $1,488 for recreation funds. We, and then it has a list of what you can use it for and can't use it for. I know this is funding that we receive on an annual basis, but it's actually for fiscal 2023, unfortunately.
Is this hilt money?
Yes. It went down from $6,000 when the BSA was in place to AmeriCorps $2,000. And then, now we've been hovering at about $1,400. And every year, I write a letter to the commission explaining what we use the funds for. But $1,400 to run this building is easily accountable, just running the heat. And we do use it for recreation. So is everybody okay with me signing whatever the document is that I have to sign?
The first one says awards for youth or community programs. So that's what this would be. The community center qualifies as that for keeping it open for the programs that we run. So, yeah, no, I think...
It's pretty easy to account for the money. So I will just sign whatever it is. And then I will double check with administration to see exactly where they are and what letter I may or may not need to send then, accounting for it. Is there any other, other? Yeah, so if not, we're gonna go into an executive session if someone makes a... Just signing the agreement. So does someone want to make a motion to go into an executive session and then adjourn at that point? So don't come back in here.
I make the motion that we go into executive session and when we are finished, we close, we close the meeting and do not come back into our regular meeting.
And the purpose is to discuss imminent or pending litigation pursuant to Utah Code 524204. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, what we'll do is log out of this and then we will retire to a different room while Craig breaks things down. It is 7:23.